Thank you, God, for this day. Thank you for the opportunity to be together, to celebrate, to begin a new school year. We're excited about the opportunity that we have for our students. We ask you to just bless this time, to bless our leadership, Lord God, bless our school board members and the decisions and the vision they have for us, bless our director, Dr. Cash, and we also just take this time to honor and recognize the accomplishments of our students. And so we invite your peace, your glory, and the awesomeness of who you are in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen.
Thank you, Dr. Jones. I call to order and welcome you to the Bradley County Board of Education Regular Meeting for August the 14th, 2025. I would like to recognize our elected officials, Dan Howell, Cindy Slater, Denny Collins. Thank you for being here. As always, you are welcome, and we appreciate your interest in Bradley County schools. Our pledge tonight will be led by Nancy Kason.
Attention, salute, pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Our first item of business is the consent agenda. Does anyone have items that they would like to pull from the consent agenda?
Yes, Chairman. I'd like to pull, make a motion to pull 4.4 F from the consent agenda.
4.4?
It's the Sun Life.
Okay.
Resolution for the Sun Life share account access.
Okay.
Is that in consent agenda?
Yes, it's in your consent agenda.
Chairman, babe?
Yes.
That will go with the end of our agenda.
Okay. Patty, would you put that at the very end and please remind me if I forget? I don't think it takes a motion. I think that you can simply request, Ms. Goins. I'll say, okay, other than that particular item which will be added to the end of the agenda, any other items to remove? If not, could I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Make a, sorry, go ahead. Say, make a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Second. Okay, I have a motion and I have a second. Any further discussion? Patty, will you please call the roll?
Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
Mr. Rossing?
Yes.
Ms. Spence?
Yes.
Ms. Beatty?
Yes.
Ms. Beatty?
Yes.
Ms. Goins?
Yes.
Seven yes, zero no.
Thank you. The next item, persons requesting to address the board on agenda items. Patty, did we have anyone? Our next item, Director of Schools report, Dr. Linda Cash.
Thank you. I just want to tell you, have in front of you some great news from us. You have the first, which was our opening assembly, and we had over a thousand staff there with attendance and roll out of the red carpet, welcoming our students on August the 6th with over 10,000 students, and August the 7th was our first day. We also want to point out that we have lots of system-wide range of new educators and staff. We're thrilled to work with each one of them. We have 16 new elementary teachers, 22 new secondary teachers, and two new school counselors. Lots of exciting things. Hopewell Project is starting. If you go by there, you can see everything moving and shaking there, and we'll have an update later. We have a highlight for our Lake Forest Middle School eighth-grade track athlete, Lakeland Gates. She qualified for the AAU Junior Olympic All-American Athlete in the high jump, and she'll be competing in Houston, Texas, and we wish her the best. Again, our students will eat free for the 25-26 school year for breakfast and lunch. Wanted to be sure we kept that up to date. And then again, with our achievement, just note that in our T cap data, Bradley County is showing strong growth in achievement rates from the previous years in all subjects in elementary E L A, middle school social studies, and high school English. Had high levels of achievement ever since the pandemic, so we have just continued to raise our scores. And we will let you know when we can share those more. And then I have people to introduce. The first guest that we have that is new to the Bradley County school system is Ms. Liz Moffett. Liz is our new assistant, our executive administrative assistant that will start with us next week. And Liz, if you would like to share some things with us, so we welcome you, we're glad. A lot of your principals are back there, your supervisors are back there, you've got everybody here staring at you.
No pressure. As Dr. Cash said, I am Liz Moffett. I came formally from Family Resource Agency. I was considered their special projects specialist, so all things communications, social networking, things of that nature, and serving with their policy board. Of that nature, I am a Bradley County school kid from first grade all the way to graduating. That was Charleston, Akoi, Walker Valley. So I'm very excited to be back and serving, and I'm so looking forward to serving with you all and just this district as a whole. So thank y'all.
Thank you.
Well, I just want to say welcome aboard and hold on. Lots of exciting things happening. My next introduction is Makes My Heart Sing, Ms. Britton Sap. If you would come forward. Britton, Britton is the newly appointed stu-, I have to get it right, State Board Student Member as a voting member for the state of Tennessee. And she is fabulous, and we're proud of her, and I just want her to, want you to know that that's an exceptional award. And appoint, it is an appointee. It's not, she had to interview, send resumes, she had to do all kinds of stuff. And so if you just want to share a little bit about what you think that's going to be for you, because we're going to be watching most likely, just share some of the things with us.
Yes, I'm super excited to have the opportunity to represent our district as well as the state of Tennessee. As a student, I got a phone call the day that I received the email, and he said that I'm one in five in the nation who will, one in five students in the nation who will get a vote on the State Board of Education. And so I feel super grateful for this opportunity and the confidence that you've placed in me, and thank you so much.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Hey, Britton, Britton, I would like to ask, when there are things that come up that you really think this board needs to be aware of, that you maybe share some of those, either going through Dr. Cash or possibly even doing like maybe a, I don't know how often, how often does the State Board meet? Is it monthly, bi-monthly?
Quarterly.
Quarterly? Well, whenever you meet, maybe we could have her back?
Sure.
And she could do a little update for us?
That'd be awesome.
Thank you again and congratulations. That is a wonderful honor, and I am very proud that you represent Bradley County. And I know your mother is too. I think I see her back there. So congratulations. Yeah. Oh, lots of family members, yes. It's kind of exciting. And we have a special guest with us, our state representative, Mr. Dan Howell, who has a special presentation for our girls softball team. So, Dr. Jones, if you would just bring them in for us, and Mr. Howell, if you would just, Representative Howell, if you would just come forward, they'll come in.
Very good. And let me just say while they're coming in that this appointment by Brittany Sap wasn't appointed by just anybody. This was the governor's appointment, so it's a very high honor, and we all should be extremely proud of her. Let me say what an honor and a privilege it is for you to always make time for me on your agenda, and thank you, Chair Lady. And very proud of these girls, as I know you are. When an athletic team such as this achieves such high success, I always like to have them as our guests on the floor of the House of Representatives. And we've had the girls' basketball team from Bradley Central, as you know, and some others. But we couldn't get our schedules together this year. We were extremely busy, and you have to book those weeks and weeks in advance with the clerk's office. So we just couldn't get it done. But I'm so glad that we can do it today, and this is the way of the Tennessee Legislature to honor such great achievement by, and you've got the trophy there, I see, 2025 State Champions Girls Softball Division One. And I'm not going to read the entire proclamation, I'm just going to briefly scan it because I know you have a lot to do. Whereas it is fitting that we should salute these student athletes who through their extraordinary efforts have distinguished themselves as true champions of whom we can all be proud, and whereas one such exemplary group of young women is the Lady Mustangs softball team of Walker Valley High School where both of my granddaughters graduated by Hathaway, whose members have proven themselves to be the fiercest of competitors and truly worthy of admiration by winning the 2025 T double S double A Class Four Softball, Class One A, did they get this wrong? Softball State Championship? If it's wrong, we'll change it. Whereas in the team's third appearance in the state title game, the Lady Mustangs captured their first T double S double A softball championship title with a 10 to 8 win over the number one ranked Green Hills, and I think the coach told me they came from behind in the last inning.
Yes.
So they are, they're some fighters. So we, we honor you today, and coaches, I would love to present this to you, and I would love to get a picture with these students as well. Thank you so much. Can I get the new assistant?
Yes.
Assist and take?
Yes, she's actually a photographer as well.
Oh.
Girls, why don't you swing around this way and let, get a good picture with, with Representative Howell? Representative Howell, Dan?
I'm sorry.
I know that you said we had lots of important things to do, and we most certainly do, but nothing is more important and more exciting than honoring our students. So thank you.
That is correct. Everybody, please. Do you have a, this one in the social media?
I'll count three. One, two, three. One, two, three.
Mary.
Stay right there, Dan. Dr. Jones, would you like to join them in the picture?
Yes.
Sure. I told the group of individuals last week, I had nothing to do with this.
Thank you.
And stay here, girls. So y'all will swing back around that way, and Dr. Jones, we, Ms. Beatty, I'll turn it back over to you. Thank you, thank you, Mr. Howell.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, our next item, of course, Walker Valley High School Girls Softball Team, Dr. Jeremy Jones, and guess, I think I see April and Lauren, and the girls, so I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you, Madam Chair, scoreboard representatives, Dr. Cash. I appreciate this because the culture of Walker Valley is about honoring and recognizing great accomplishments. And so we are here to celebrate these young ladies known as the Feisty Phillies and the exceptional leadership of Coach Lindberg and Coach Richards. Last week, I attended the celebration honoring their incredible achievement of becoming state champions, and I was proud of their victories on the field, but it was even more humbling to witness the joy on everyone's faces. Mothers, fathers, grandparents beamed with pride as what they witnessed their little girls and what they had become. Faculty and staff were so proud of how well you represented our school. Former alumni celebrated the tradition that they helped establish and then now carried forward to this remarkable accomplishment. Ultimately, it's the testament of the power of your sacrifice, discipline, and the love that can be shown through sports and teamwork. And so I truly feel honored. And as I mentioned, I had no partners. Thank you for letting me witness it, celebrate it, and it makes me extremely proud to once again call you state champions. So one more time, please give a big round of applause for your Tennessee State Softball Champions, Walker Valley Icy Phillies.
So I also challenged one of the coaches to just share something real quick. So I think Coach Lindberg is going to give a quick word, and I'm a very personal person. If you don't know me, and so I want their names to be said, they're going to come up and say their name, and then their grade level. So Coach Lindberg.
A little shorter than he is. Well, first of all, let me tell you what an honor it is to stand before you today. I am a product of Bradley County schools. I come from a long line of educators that have poured their heart and soul into Bradley County schools, and to be standing in the room named after my grandfather is really cool. So with that being said, these girls are why we're here today, and it is just an absolute honor and a blessing to be their coach. Like Dr. Jones said, the one thing when asked what separates this team from other teams is the love that they show, not only to each other, but to the community. Not only are they great athletes on the field, but what makes me most proud of them is how they conduct themselves off the field. They are the true definition of student athletes. When they were competing for a state championship, they had a 3.82 cumulative GPA, and in the fall, they had a cumulative 3.92 GPA as a team. And that just shows that they are great kids, they have big hearts, they come from great families, and it's just my honor to be their coach. They serve our community. We've done several service projects with like the Miracle League, the Caring Place, the Salvation Army. They pour their heart and soul into whatever they do, and nobody deserves it more than them, and I'm just blessed, and I know Coach Richards feels the same way, to be their coach. So thank you again so much for having us today. It's a true honor. I'm going to let the girls introduce themselves. We have a couple that have already gone to college, a couple that couldn't be here today for various reasons, but I'm going to let them introduce themselves and then tell what grade they're in.
Hey, Lauren, before you start that, could you tell me a little bit about your grandfather and his coaching record? I think it may run in the family.
Well, you know, it, you know, I always wanted to step in his footsteps. You know, he was a math teacher and a coach, and now I'm the instructional coach at Walker Valley, but I started out as a math teacher and a coach. And so his boys' basketball team at Bradley won the 1962 state championship. And to bring another state championship to Bradley County schools with my heart, it's where my heart is, is just an honor and privilege.
And this is the William R. Walker Boardroom girls. And he was superintendent for how long?
16 years. Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right.
Hi, my name's Livy Kincaid, and I'm a sophomore.
I'm Sway Capron, and I'm a sophomore.
I'm Ansley Battle, and I'm also a sophomore.
I'm Carly Blackwell, and I'll be a freshman in college this year.
I'm Nasa Thomas, and I'm a senior.
I'm Brody Davis, and I'm a senior.
I'm Morgan Rice, and I'm a junior.
I'm Haley Davis, and I'm a senior.
I'm Lea Ripien, and I'm a sophomore.
And I'm Bella Howard, and I'm a sophomore.
That's awesome. A lot of returning for the next three years. That's awesome.
We appreciate all you guys do for us behind the scenes. It is a mighty task that you take on every day to do what's best for Bradley County schools, so thank you. We have brought you a little gift of appreciation, so ladies, if you will take your gift to the correct board member, please.
Well, that, we should be giving you gifts.
Thank you so much.
Congratulations. Thank you.
Thank you all again so much for having us.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you for letting us honor them.
Thank you. Thank you, girls.
Thank you. Congratulations.
Congratulations again. Yay. Our next item of business is the Family Resource Agency, East Cleveland lease. Dr. Taylor?
Good evening. I have a lease to share with you this evening. We've had a relationship for 20 years with Family Resource Agency, and we actually are updating this lease this year, so I want to call your attention to an addition that was not in the lease agreement in previous years. This is paragraph nine. If you don't mind, I'll read it to you. Family Resource Agency Incorporated shall, at its sole cost and expense, obtain and maintain in full force and effect throughout the term of this lease, a policy of insurance meeting the coverage and limits required by the Bradley County Board of Education. Such policy shall name Bradley County schools as an additional insured with respect to any and all liability arising out of Family Resource Agency Incorporated or any sublet's' use, occupancy, or maintenance of the premises. Family Resource Agency Incorporated shall provide Bradley County Board of Education with a valid certificate of insurance. Other than that addition, this lease remains very similar to what agreement we have had with them over the past 20 years, and so I submit this to you for your approval.
Dr. Cash, do you have anything to add? I do. Just, just note that with this addition, it, it gives more protection for Bradley County schools, but, Dr. Taylor, you may want to tell them what building we're leasing because there may be some that do not know where they are and what she's bought.
Yes, yes. So Bradley County Schools owns a building on Strawberry Lane. I think this building was previously called the East Cleveland School, so if you are a longtime Clevelander, you might remember it under that name. Currently, that building is used by Family Resource Agency for offices that are used to help manage the pre-K program we have in Bradley County schools, as well as some classroom spaces that are for pre-K students.
Any other comments?
I just have a question. So this is the first time I've seen this because I'm assuming this is every five years?
It is, that's correct.
Based on this, so I wasn't here five years ago, so I just have a quick question.
Absolutely.
Just on number six, so they have the right to sublet the space out? Is that for monetary gain or?
So, so I believe the current operation in which they sublet it is to Cleveland City Schools, who uses it for other pre-K classes. We have all of our pre-K classes on our campuses. They do not, and so they use some of those spaces for pre-K classes.
But they charge them a monthly rate, I'm assuming?
So I, I think all of that goes back into serving the students and maintaining the building. So in this lease, Family Resource Agency is responsible for any remodeling, repairs, or maintenance to that facility. Our budget does not provide any upkeep.
Thank you.
Sure.
Okay, and when you received this as an attachment, it did not have number nine, correct? So that's why you're getting this amendment?
New copy, yes.
Okay. Any other questions?
Are they awarded?
They are, yes, sir. We did, we did show them, we showed this to them as well as to our board attorney. Any other questions?
Do I have a motion to approve the lease agreement between the Bradley County Board of Education and the Family Resource Agency?
I'll make a motion to approve the lease.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion or questions? Patty, will you please call the roll?
Ms. Goins?
Yes.
Ms. Beatty?
Yes.
Ms. Lee?
Yes.
Mr. Rossing?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Ms. Taylor?
Yes.
Seven yes, zero no.
Thank you. Thank you. Our next item, the Hopewell Project Change Order, Corbett Drew and Kyle Page.
Good evening. I know you all are all huge fans of change orders, but this one is a deductive change order on the order.
First I've seen of it. It's great.
There's no trophy or proclamation. We didn't bring gifts, but it's, it's about a $400,000 deductive change order, and, and what that is, is we have de-scoped some things from Phase One and are shifting them to Phase Two where they make more sense. And so, so it doesn't go away, it just gets deferred, and we'll, we'll shift that part of the budget to Phase Two. Any questions? And it, and it's, it's really having to deal with the fire alarm and some improvements to the existing facility, not to the new things we're building. Yes, sir.
Is everything on pretty smooth?
I don't want to jinx it, but yes, sir. One of the, one of the challenges that we have at Hopewell is there was a lot of underground, there was a lot of old stuff that was underground. It was, and, and we're, as we poured the foundations in the elevator pit at this point, so we're effectively out of the ground at this point without any major issues. So very grateful for that. So we're off, we're off to a very good start. Timing wise, we were able to get parking lots in, get playgrounds in, so scheduled, Tyson really did a great job performing this summer.
This is not affecting the road that we built, is it?
No, sir. And in fact, we made, we made, on the fly, we made a bit of an improvement to that road to, to, to eliminate a drainage issue. I apologize to Principal Winters that her kids missed three days of the new playground. Sorry. But it's in now.
But the new playground looks great.
It does look good.
There will be some greenery that comes in along to help in the line of sight to our playgrounds as well. That is on the horizon.
Okay, do I have a motion to approve the change order for the Hopewell Project?
I saw move.
Ms. Kason, do I have a second?
A second.
Any further discussion or questions?
Nope.
If not, Patty, will you please call the roll?
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Rossing?
Yes.
Ms. Lee?
Yes.
Ms. Goins?
Yes.
Ms. Beatty?
Yes.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
Ms. Kason?
Yes.
Seven yes, zero no.
Thank you.
How do we navigate that? It went away.
Are you wanting to show us something?
Yes, ma'am. The next, the next agenda item.
Okay, are we going on to the next one?
At, at your leisure.
Okay.
You're the chairman.
Next item is the Bradley County Board Construction Update with Kyle Corbett and Peter Ludman.
Quickly kind of run through all the active 177 and capital outlet projects. Bradley Central, the baseball field house, we've broken, we're out of the ground. You can see the foundations and stem ball are poured, slab is about a week out, and the pre-engineered metal building will show up, and erection will start on the, on September 6th. So on track for a January 1 completion, and super excited about that. Things are going well. The entry vestibule, we are almost virtually complete with that. We're working through some punch list items with the contractor, and everything's wrapped up there. Science wing expansion at Bradley Central. FEMA threw a little bit of a curve ball, and we had to check another box along the way, which was an archaeological survey, and no artifacts were found. And, and so they're going through the process, but my understanding is that all the money's been allocated, it's sitting at the state, and we think this is the last box to be checked. So barring any further surprises, we should be, we should be receiving that from FEMA soon. We're chasing every avenue to, to confirm when, and, but we are soon to release cope with, with your blessing, we're soon to release cope on the redesign of that. They had only progressed through design development, and, and They had only progressed through design development, and that was without the storm shelter. So, we're going to go back and revise the design development and then launch into construction documents in anticipation of the FEMA funding and starting construction. Any questions on that one?
Is that going to be an additional cost? The storm shelter revised?
Madam Chair, it is an increased cost, but it was already budgeted and set aside.
And the increased cost is absorbed by the FEMA grant.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Hopewell, again, out of the ground, and things are moving pretty well. You can see a progress photo kind of below the rendering and how it's coming together. We're out of the ground. The parking lot over on the left-hand side is complete. Hopewell Highway is restored for the opening day of school. Foundations are in, and all the underground utilities are done. So, we're off to a really strong start there. Any questions? Oakaway Middle, we got our TCO, working through a little bit of punch list. But, the most amazing part of this is the kids, and they had a great first day back and seemed to be. It seems to be well-received among them. I don't know if the board wants to do a ribbon cutting or a tour.
We will. We will. We will. Madam Chair, as far as the final walkthrough and everything, Dr. Lindberg will work with us and give us some dates when the punch list is finished and everything's done, no construction happening at the time. And so, we'll make sure that happens.
Very good. Park View is out for. It's in for permit and out for bid currently. And we're still tracking to have that completed in the summer of '26. And then.
Madam Chair, also backing up just a little bit, we, with Hopewell, we will have a groundbreaking. We need to get it to where we can actually do that without anybody having any accidents or anything. So, we will be sure to schedule that as well, and we'll work with Ms. Winters to make that one happen. So, those will be two that are coming up. We are planning it after either late September or early October, it looks like, what will be happening.
Very good. Yes, sir.
I know Hopewell is the way off. Oakaway Middle, and I believe I know that. I know I know that. So, you don't ask the question, you don't know that. Kids, even though we're not ready to have a memory, kids are in that building.
Yes.
Ribbon cutting. Yes, sir.
And it's approved by the Fire Marshal.
Yeah, absolutely. Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
We'll have a ribbon cutting.
No, they're in it.
Yes, yes, sir.
The kids are in it.
Very happy.
They're not waiting for the big scissors.
Good.
And I will say, our partners with the State Fire Marshal's Office were. They were incredibly helpful and diligent and worked really well with us on this one. So, those are the active projects, and then we shift into planning. Just a quick update. You've seen this in our board workshop, at the board retreat, and really want to kind of update. Photo credits go to Mr. Pike and his drone. But, you can see roughly 1,200 units on the east and northeast quadrant, about 500 units planned on the west side. Those ostensibly would be handled by the expansion at Hopewell. And then, the additional units, additional residential units that are coming online, you can see, most of those are in the east and northeast quadrant. And if you project that quadrant out, that's why the Dry Valley Road property was selected. And the school system closed on that Dry Valley Road, 40 acres, 40 plus or minus acres on Dry Valley Road for a future elementary school site. And that site would sit off the road and up on the hill. So, this is just north of Jetport. And we've got the intersection at a high point in the road. And we've elongated the entry road to give us vehicle stacking off of Dry Valley to eliminate traffic issues on Dry Valley. And that puts the school at the top of a hill, gives it a beautiful place to sit, and nice vantage point from the top of the hill. So, it's.
Do we know what's going to be in front of it?
The, there's two parcels that sit either side of the entry road that the seller retains, and they would presumably use those for future residential. That's it. Any questions?
Good job.
Thank you for your time.
Peter, do you have anything to add?
Not in particular, but it's just happy to be up here and having some positive updates to give to the board. So, I have more to come.
Okay. Thank you.
We appreciate that, Dean.
Thank you.
Mr. Bryson?
I really think all three of those are doing a great job. I really appreciate Peter and his latest friend, the job they've been doing for us in every project we've had. Been great. I really appreciate that.
Susan.
But, Dr. Cash, I've been, not talking to other board members, but around people keep asking me, when are you going to be able to scoop? And I want to officially put a motion on the table that we ask the commission. We've got this property. We're buying property. They want to know, why are you spending money to buy property? You don't have no plan for a scoop. I want to have some plans for a scoop, and that's the commission. You decide where's the best place, and you're paid. We need a scoop. More than one property.
Dr. Cash?
Mr. Bryson, I want to clarify. So, are you asking me to go to the commission to get a resolution to confirm?
For funding, yes.
For funding? Okay.
That's why I make a motion.
Okay.
As they would give, but we're going to ask for it.
Okay. So, the motion is for Dr. Cash to approach the county commission seeking a resolution for.
Funding for a new elementary school.
For a new elementary school.
And then, just for clarification, the time of the building, everything, would be working with the commission and availability of funds. But, you're most likely looking at '27, 2027. So, and that's when, as we watch these builds go up, that's really when we need to be breaking ground.
Well, we also, if I was on the commission, I want to know, why are you buying all this property? What do you plan on? Yes, answer my needs, build, wherever you take the most. But, what are you going to put on that other? What are you going to put on that property up at Walker Valley? And we're looking at some more land to understand. And the Blue Springs, or whatever they call it. I'm just asking, what are we going to do? Do we have any idea yet?
Okay. Of course, I can't.
Point of order. Can we make a motion on an item that's not on our agenda?
It.
I know. My question is, is it legal, Mr. Bryson? I'm not saying I'm against it. I'm just trying to follow the proper procedures.
You would request and vote for it to be added to the end of the agenda as an additional item on the agenda.
Would you like for that to be added at the end of the agenda?
But, we need a scoop. And we keep talking about it.
Thank you.
But, we need a scoop.
So, just for clarification with your next question, once you see all this expansion and everything, of course, that creates more children, and you're going to have to move into a middle school. And with that said, the property that's by Walker Valley, that is the intent. That would be many years away. Many meaning, you know, five, maybe. I'm not sure because I'm not in that design mode. But, that is the intent of that property because as we grow and expand on that north end, everything that's pushing north is going, will absorb what we have here, and then we will need space for those other students. But, you want the elementary because you're feeding that so that you can then feed another secondary school. So, I just confused everybody, didn't I?
No. Not on that part. I'm going back to the previous part. Do we need a motion to add this at the end of the agenda?
You do.
So, I'm not trying to issue, Mr. Bryson. I'm just trying to follow the right procedures. Do we not have to do that before we approve the agenda?
You.
To add something to the agenda?
You could, or you could put it as moving, as asking for executive approval. There are multiple methods, but.
I thought you said a construction update. I'm on the update.
Yeah.
While we're waiting for clarification, could you repeat what you believe the motion might be?
For Dr. Cash to approach the county commission to request money for a new elementary school.
Preferably in Blue Springs area. Not growing that way. Perfectly in Blue Springs area.
No, I'm just.
Not one to your favor or not.
No, I guess my observation is, and I'm not on the commission, but that would seem to be a little bit vague and take the prerogative out of this board to a specific ask. And so, I would be more comfortable with a little bit further understanding about. I mean, if we go to the commission and say we want money, that's really not an ask. So, I would rather be further along with respect to what the ask is before we make a motion to the commission to consider this. That would be my observation, Mr. Bryson.
I like it.
I think they want to know. I'm for a scoop.
I think they already know, Mr. Bryson. Ms. Lee? I think they already know. It does say, a member must first make a motion to amend the agenda typically when the agenda is up for adoption. This motion requires a second debate and a majority vote to pass. If the agenda has already been adopted, a two-thirds vote or a majority of the entire membership may be required to add the item. So, to add the item, Mr. Bryson would have to make a motion to add this at the end of the agenda and get a two-thirds vote. You'd have to make the motion, get a second, and then have two-thirds vote.
Got you.
So, you're either be voting for it.
So, you. Thank you.
I make a more of that motion, which I got to make. I make it.
Okay. Mr. Bryson is making a motion to add this item to the end of the agenda.
But, and they drive, do they know yet? I talk to some of them every day, and I don't know that they officially. And they've got to know when they do the budget way ahead, not just for today, this year, next year, 10, 3. They've got no head time. And I think we need to get on record, sort of just buying land. I mean, that's pretty obvious we're going to scoop. But, when are we going to ask for something? That's what I'm saying. If we don't, that's okay, but I'm for a scoop.
Okay.
If you got to do, I'll tell any of you. I run Cleveland today, look at all the.
We have a motion. Do I have a second?
So, this has nothing to do whether I agree or not. We can discuss this at the end, but I will make a second for Mr. Bryson's motion to add this to the agenda so that we may continue this conversation.
Okay. We have a motion and a second to continue the conversation at the end of this meeting. We have to have a two-thirds vote. So, we have to have a two-thirds vote. Patty, would you please call the roll?
Ms. Lee?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Ms. Hayes?
Yes.
Cash?
Yes.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
Ms. Goins?
Yes.
Mr. Bryson?
Yes.
Seven yes, zero no.
Okay. We will add that at the end of the meeting. And now, I will attempt to go back to the agenda. I think we are on budget amendments. Ellen Smith?
Bring it back to this year's money.
Okay.
The first budget amendment I have tonight is for Fund 145, which is the P.I.S.T. Center operations. The P.I.S.T. Center is bringing in income through their CAMs. However, the budget amendment tonight strictly deals with these programs that are being run out of P.I. that the students pay fees for and that have donations for such things as CTE, esports, mechatronics, machining, and the welding and the medium-heavy trucks. So, that is specifically what this particular budget amendment is dealing with tonight.
Do I have a motion to approve the special revenue budget amendment, Fund 145? I saw move. I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Patty, will you please call the roll?
Mr. Bryson?
Yes.
Ms. Lee?
Yes.
Ms. Goins?
Yes.
Ms. Kayson?
Yes.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
Ms. Hayes?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Seven yes, zero no.
I'm going to take the next four as a packet, so I'll flip through and explain them. The first one is number two in your packet, and we are just moving year-end reserves back into this budget. They are for safety, for CTE, technology, and the baseball field house. The third one in your packet is our grant for voluntary pre-K, which is run by our Family Resource Agency through our memorandum of understanding. The fourth one is two grants that Dr. Hayes has obtained for transition school to work and for the state special education preschool that work with our special ed students. And also, one state change that the state requested when we submitted our budget. We're just changing an object code. And the fifth budget amendment is doing some true-ups with our TISA funding as regards to our TISA that we do get on a monthly basis and as well as educator bonus money that is going out in August. So, these are state cleanups to get everything to match. And that is all for 141.
Do I have a motion to approve the general fund amendments two through five, Fund 141?
So moved.
I have a motion. Do I have a second? Any discussion? Patty, will you please call the roll?
Ms. Kayson?
Yes.
Ms. Goins?
Yes.
Ms. Lee?
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Ms. Hayes?
Yes.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
And the last budget amendment I have tonight is for education capital projects. It's just trueing up the accounts for Oakaway Middle. We weren't quite as far along paying, so we're just pulling it back into the current year budget so we can finish out that project.
Do I have a motion to approve the capital projects amendment, Fund 177?
So moved.
Have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Patty, will you please call the roll?
Yes.
Yes.
Ms. Hayes?
Yes.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
Ms. Kayson?
Yes.
Ms. Goins?
Yes.
Mr. Bryson?
Yes.
Seven yes, zero no.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next item of business is policy review first reading. Amanda Lee?
Thank you, Madam Chairman. The first policy up for review is Policy 1.901, which is charter school applications. There were some new changes to the law that shift certain responsibilities to the State Board of Education and to the Tennessee Public Charter Schools Commission. And so, we are just adding those law changes. And the recommendation is to adopt the TSBA policy changes that are highlighted. So, I would like to make a motion to approve Policy 1.901 on first reading.
Okay. I have a motion to approve charter school applications policy. Do I have a second?
Second.
Have a second. Any discussion? Patty, will you call the roll?
Ms. Hayes?
Yes.
Casey?
Yes.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
Mr. Bryson?
Yes.
Ms. Owens?
Yes.
Mr. Allen, I'm sorry.
Yes.
Yes.
The next policy is policy 1.903, which is charter school oversight. Basically, the same thing as the policy we just reviewed. There were new changes to the law that shifts those responsibilities to the State Board of Education and to the Tennessee Public Charter Schools. So we are just adopting the TSBA recommended changes that are highlighted. And I would like to make a motion to approve policy 1.903.
I have a motion to approve charter school oversight policy. Do I have a second?
Second.
Discussion? Patty, will you call the roll?
Ms. Casey?
Yes.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
Mr. Bryson?
Yes.
Ms. Lee?
Yes.
Ms. Owens?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Yes.
Seven yes, zero no.
The next policy is policy 1.905, charter school renewal. Same thing on this policy, which is the law changes that are shifting to the State Board of Education and Tennessee Public Charter School Commission. We are just adopting the TSBA policy changes as highlighted. So I would like to make a motion to approve policy 1.905 on first reading.
I have a motion to approve charter school renewal. Do I have a second? Discussion?
Just to clarify, we don't have any, we do not have any charter schools currently operating in this.
No.
Have we ever had one?
No.
No, we just have to have the policies in place if it ever happens. So we're just updating all the law changes, basically.
I guess I kinda knew the answer. I just wanted to make sure everybody else understood.
Well, as Mr. Bryson says, you don't ask a question unless you know the answer.
You don't know the answer.
Okay. Okay. I have a motion and a second, and we've had some discussion. Any other questions? Patty, will you call the roll?
Yes.
Mr. Bryson?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Ms. Lee?
Yes.
Ms. Casey?
Yes.
Ms. Baydie?
Yes.
Ms. Owens?
Yes.
Seven yes, zero no.
The next policy is policy 1.906, charter school revocation. Same thing here, just updating the law changes and adopting the TSBA highlighted changes. So I would like to make a motion to approve policy 1.906 on first reading.
I have a motion to approve charter school revocation. Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? Patty, will you call the roll?
Ms. Owens?
Yes.
Ms. Baydie?
Yes.
Ms. Lee?
Yes.
Mr. Bryson?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Ms. Casey?
Yes.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
Seven yes, zero no. Motion passed.
The next policy is policy 2.403, which is surplus property sales. There are new changes in the law. In the past, federal regulations required that certain actions be taken when property valued at $5,000 or below was disposed of. That limit has increased to $10,000. So we have revised the policy to align with the new standard. Additionally, public chapter 500 includes new criteria for posting notices on news and informational websites. And this new law clarifies that the website is not intended to be the same newspaper of general circulation utilized under, utilized for a printed publication. So we are just adopting those changes as recommended by TSBA. So I would like to make a motion to approve policy 2.403 on first reading.
I have a motion to approve surplus property sales. Do I have a second?
Second.
Discussion?
Yes. I just have a question. When we say surplus property, we're talking about like computers, desk, anything. We're not talking about like, and I'm just throwing land. We're talking about properties and like computers, desk, anything that's electronic that may be outdated or anything like that, correct? Or lawnmowers or whatever.
You, we sign off on what surplus property is, and in that surplus property, it's usually out of use or damaged or something, something in that neighborhood.
Okay. Thank you.
Madam Chair.
Any. Okay.
So on this, we're currently, anything valued at 5,000 or above, and we're looking to adopt a new policy of $10,000 or above. But that's a recommendation. It's not a law. It's not a requirement to adopt that.
Madam Chair.
It is actually a change in the law that allows us to do that, and I believe that it's in line with, with our county commission policies, but it is in the law that we, we can do that.
Well, our president still, like, fill out a form.
Yes, sir.
Anything they get rid of this about?
Yes, sir. Everything that goes to surplus is, it comes, comes before.
The law provides the threshold of what it is, and it was $5,000 prior. And the federal regulations have been changed, and they increased it to 10,000. So.
But if we, if we wanted to, Miss Lee, would we be able to keep that at 5,000, where they would still have to get approval?
I mean, they, they have to get approval anyway, because it has to go, they have to fill out the form, and it goes to the central office. It just, this is just meeting the federal regulations to adjust it to that. But anything that's five, according to the policy, anything that's over $500 or that has a value, it's a surplus policy which, property which has no value or a value of less than $500 can be disposed of. But anything that's over $500 has to come, too.
And then if it's over 5,000, it would come to the board. But this would be changing that to 10,000.
It would come to the board with 10,000. Yes.
And it is mostly material that is no longer usable, like when the permethium boards break or, or things like that. It's not, it's, it allows us to have a smoother operation of, of the system because the value of things has.
Increased.
Increased phenomenally. Any other comments or questions or? Okay. We have a motion and a second. Patty, would you call the roll?
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Bryson?
Yes.
Ms. Lee?
Yes.
Ms. Owens?
Yes.
Ms. Baydie?
Yes.
Mr. Taylor?
No.
Ms. Casey?
Yes.
She is one no. Motion passed.
Thank you. The next policy is policy 4.212, which is a virtual education program. Public chapter 44 permits districts to use hybrid learning in the event of dangerous or extreme weather or in an emergency as determined by the director of schools. If the district uses a hybrid learning, the board must have a policy in place. And so we are basically just updating our policy according to TSBA recommendation. So I would make a motion to approve policy 4.212 on first reading.
Okay. I have a motion to approve the virtual education program policy. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Discussion, questions? Patty, will you call the roll?
Ms. Lee?
Yes.
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 Ms. Casey?
Yes.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
Ms. Owens?
Yes.
Mr. Bryson?
Yes.
Seven yes, zero no. Motion passed.
The next policy is policy 5.119, employment of retirees. There were some changes to the law this year, which is public chapter 159 makes several changes that will impact employees, employing retirees in the 25, 2025, 2026 school year. Importantly, there is now a requirement for a bona fide separation of service prior to reemployment. This includes a 60-day separation of service, and there can be no previous agreement to return to work. We are accepting that TSBA sample policy. And before I make a motion, I don't know if Dr. Cash, if you want to make any comments on this new law change.
The, the new law, Madam Chair, I'm sorry. The, the new law that is in place now is actually coming down from the comptroller's office and IRS. There were complications in tax, taxes where there was not a bona fide separation of service. So when you're in the Tennessee retirement system, you now have become under, under more scrutiny with the IRS. And so if there's not a bona fide break, then they can be taxed at a higher rate. It also indicates that we, as a district, need to be sure that we are posting positions and doing those things. But let's say a teacher retires June 30th, that, that teacher, our employee, does not, not just a teacher, has to have a, a complete break of 60 days before they can be reemployed. So that's what this is about. It's really about tax, taxes and the comptroller. And we want to abide by anything the IRS tells us to abide by.
Yes, we do.
So with that being said, I'll make a motion to approve policy 5.119.
I have a motion to approve employment of retirees. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second. Any discussion?
I do have one question on this. So this will be from today forward. This isn't retroactive. So anything, does that affect, would that affect us currently from this school year?
Yes.
Okay.
It would impact this year.
It's effective immediately.
It's effective immediately. So we, we already, because the law passed, so we already put in place the 60-day because it came down from the comptroller. So when that happened, so teachers that retired last year, it automatically hit those. Moving forward, it's, it's any teacher that has to go into a category. There are multiple categories that you can call Ms. Crispin and get clarification on, but it did go into effect this year.
Okay.
Any other questions? Patty, will you call the roll?
Mr. Bryson?
Yes.
Ms. Lee?
Yes.
Ms. Owens?
Yes.
Ms. Casey?
Yes.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
Ms. Baydie?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Seven yes, zero no. Motion passed.
The next policy is policy 6.200, attendance. The recommendation in reviewing this policy update is to delete the highlighted sections of this policy as it is not understanding we do not follow these practices any longer. I would like to make a motion to approve policy 6.200 on first reading.
I have a motion to approve the attendance policy. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Discussion, questions? Patty, will you call the roll?
Ms. Lee?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Ms. Baydie?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Ms. Casey?
Yes.
Ms. Owens?
Yes.
Mr. Bryson?
Yes.
Seven yes, zero no. Motion passed.
Last policy is policy 6.411, student wellness. There were some law changes to this policy as well. Previous law required elementary students to receive 130 minutes of physical activity per week. This has now been increased to 40 minutes each full school day. Middle school and high school students are still required to receive 90 minutes of physical activity per full school week. These requirements are separate from physical educate, physical education classes. And so we are just recommending that we adopt the TSBA recommendation with the highlighted changes. So I'll make a motion to approve policy 6.411 on first reading.
I have a motion to approve the student wellness policy. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second. Any discussion, questions? Patty, will you, oh, I'm sorry.
Since it's a state law, there's not much we can do about it, except put it in our policy, which is what we normally do. But I'm just personally wondering, how are we doing elementary teachers on an extra 40 minutes a day on the playground?
Madam Chair. Dr. Cash? They, we were already at 30 minutes, so it adds 10 minutes. And they, they do not have to be consecutive. So they have worked their schedules, and thanks to Dr. Kaler working those schedules. And I will tell you, it, it has not been easy because we have so many other requirements that have to be met. But I can tell you that they've worked miracles, and we just hope there's nothing else added to the schedule that has to be implemented or taught or anything coming forward. So Ms. Casey, if you would like to have Dr. Kaler address that.
No, I, as long as it's, but now I do have one question, Ms. Kaler. Can you count the time when we get up out of our seat and walk out to the playground?
No.
No.
No, they, they are able to include brain breaks. Sometimes they'll do some little short, you know, play a video and dance to it. I think there's a peanut butter jelly song that's particularly popular.
Is that what we need to do now in here?
Yeah.
But, and, and we, we had teachers that already implemented brain breaks even, even before there was a law requirement. But we are not counting the time they walked to the playground.
Okay. Because that is exercise.
Yeah.
More for some than others, but.
Particularly when you just move the playground a little further away from the building.
Yes.
Okay. We have a motion and a second. Patty, would you call the roll?
Madam Chair, I did have.
Oh, I'm sorry.
It's okay. Just one question about the, the second part of the, the commitment to nutrition. Were there major changes in that? From what I could tell, was there any laws or anything that were passed down? Just cleaning up some wording on that.
Cleaning up wording.
Okay.
Anything else? Patty, would you call the roll?
Ms. Baydie?
Yes.
Casey?
Yes.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
Mr. Bryson?
Yes.
Ms. Owens?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Ms. Lee?
Yes.
Seven yes, zero no. Motion passed.
Thank you. Before we go to announcements, I think we have two things to add. The first is from the consent agenda. And, yes, I think it was, is it Sun Life?
Mm-hmm. Yes.
Sun Life. So Ms. Owens, you had some questions regard, reason, you had some questions about the resolution for Sun Life share account access.
Yes. I, I had called earlier to Ellen and spoke to her, and she did, she explained it the best she could. So my, and it's not really even a concern, just that this, us voting is only a vote to get them on the authorization and access. Currently, she doesn't even know what it is, correct? So we need to figure out, by giving them that access and authorization, we can figure out what it is. What's it, what is it worth? I mean, all that good stuff. Yes. We've been able to do limited research on it, given that Dr. Cash and I are not authorized on the account. And we have determined that it, it was established from old life insurance policies in the 90s based on an agreement that was made at the time. And we do think it's worth about $6,800, so not a huge amount. But until we have access to the account and get the original share certificates back to us, that's as much as I'm able to find out. So at this point, we don't have a plan to do anything with the money that is sitting there. We may continue to collect the dividend checks we're getting. We may cash it out. We don't have a plan at this point. But until we are on the account, I'm kind of at a crossroads and I can't do anything.
And doing my research on this, I think Sun Life may go back several superintendents. It was a situation to where it was voted on by a board at one point to provide the life insurance for our employees. And the people that were on this, or I guess, I don't know if you call it policy, but this agreement are no longer in the district. Not the superintendent, not the business department, no one. I think Mr. Bryson and I were working. We were not on this board. So they will not, and I understand that, let them have access until this board agrees to that. So.
Yes.
Guess we'll find out exactly what is in there when we get that access.
And what we're gonna do with it.
Well, I don't know. We don't know exactly what's in there yet, but. Do you have a comment?
No, I was just, I was just gonna say, once we figure that, once we give you the approval to get them authorization and access, will you come back before the board and let us know? Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions about Sun Life, the resolution, anything? Okay. I think we're going to need a motion to approve the resolution for Sun Life share account access.
So moved.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any further questions? Patty, will you call the roll?
Mr. Bryson?
Yes.
Ms. Owens?
Yes.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
Ms. Casey?
Yes.
Ms. Baydie?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Ms. Lee?
Yes.
Seven yes, zero no. Motion passed.
Okay. And then the last item before announcements, we are going back to Mr. Bryson's request. And Mr. Bryson, would you like to make a motion?
Yeah, I want to say something. If the board does not want to ask for money, I can live with that. I'm just saying, I drive around Cleveland. We all drive around Cleveland. I mean, they're not starting to build houses. They built thousands of houses. They built hundreds near my house. You can't even get out of our road hardly now. I'm just saying, we're gonna have to do something. It might not be, I trust Mr. Smith and Amanda great on what they say. But, and it might not be the right way to do it, and I don't always do. I try, but maybe I don't. I just think it's the right thing. I think the commission does not want us ever come, they won't, nobody wants to ask for money or give us money, but they know that's their job eventually. And I would think they would have an, want to have idea of what we're gonna do. We're buying property here. We've got the old big street, Blue Springs property. We've got the property up the Walker Valley. What are we planning to do? And I think it's time to start, just about planning to say, hey, we've got these. We know we need a school. We know, I mean, the facts can prove that, that we need school and then move people around. That's my opinion. We could put it off to the next meeting or two meetings from now, but we're gonna have to do it sooner or later. And I do believe you could argue, I've been watching too much of these shows on TV. I believe you could argue it was part of number 10, because he provided the update, I believe you could argue it was for the number ten, because he provided the update, told about how many houses have been built at work. You don't have to figure out the next thing, it, what are you going to do better? He didn't say that, but I mean, he talked about the alley. And I just think Dr. Cash needs some leeway. Or maybe we just tell her to hold off, keep buying property or don't buy no more, oh, then. I believe that we need to build a scoop. I, I do believe, in my opinion, uh, this might be a point of his, I believe Dr. Cash and her people probably should have the, the idea about where they think it should be based on all that information they get and then get our approval of it, one way or the other, but I think she needs to know and to ask. And I know I talk too much, but I just think it's time, I just think.
Dr. Cash, do you read the?
That, what, what I, in listening to the board, what, what I would recommend is that you request working with the architect and to gather information on, you know, we, we know what population may, may be coming up. The, the north, northeast is where the land is populating, look at some current prices. Come back to the board with that information and then begin to move forward with working with the county commission. It seems to me like, um, instead of going in so vague that the direction is, let's have more information, more amount per square footage, you, you know, and backing it up to where does this school need to go? Where it looks now is that northeast end, which is why we purchased the Drive Valley. But that, that would be what I would say is let us begin to gather information on what would it cost to build? Where are we building and all the pieces that go into it before we make a recommendation to the county commission.
How long are we talking about?
Bryson, next meeting.
Why?
We can have a budget, we can have a budget feedback by the next board meeting.
You know that's coming up.
Do you have an idea where you'd recommend a school, Bill?
Don't.
As far as, as how we can cite it?
Population.
This, this is somewhat dictated at this point, understanding that the, the received growth is going out there, so I have not come back to assess that individually, but I mean, I think that's, that seems to be where things are, are headed.
I don't, I don't.
I just think if you don't ask, you don't get.
And, Ms. Bryson, I, I don't think, I, I mean, and I'm not disagree, I'm not disagree, disagreeing with you as to the fact that we do need a new school. I, I guess my only comment is maybe it's just a little premature for us to go to the county commission because I think us as a board needs to decide, where do we want that school to be built? You know, we may have some conflict on where we feel like it needs to be built. We may all be in a hundred percent agreement, but I think we need to do that and kind of get a cost before we just go to the county commission, because, I agree, yes, but we haven't been for
Pretty good idea of where you want to go.
Bryson and the team, the director of cash, she's directed us to take a look at some elementary schools that have been successful in some new builds and some designs and some of those things. I know we've got part of you, because the board really took time with and got plans on. And so taking a look at some of the, the things, we were, we were in that phase as we speak currently, preparing for
But I'm just saying, we've got the land by Walker Valley. That appears to be for a middle school, to me. We bought the land up on the, our, that, whatever that road is up there, and it's nice land, it's great, it's, it's great. And we own the Blue Spring property. How many more pieces of that we're going to buy before we know where we're going to build?
That's what we got to decide, which one we're going to build on first. That's what we need to decide as a board, which one do we want to build on first?
Which one's up there?
Yes.
Madam Chair?
Yes. We do.
It, it would be my recommendation that we come back in the next meeting with more information, some cost assessments and some possible, um, with, with, we already know the data, but we'll pull it all together. We'll have pricing, and in that meantime, we can also be working with our education chair from the commission as well as the, uh, the commission finance. And so we'd have more direction before we go to the county commission. So that would be my recommendation.
If that's what Dr. Cash wants, I'm with her.
I, I'm thinking, Mr. Bryson, instead of withdrawing, maybe a motion to request that Dr. Cash work with the architects and other staff to gather information and cost assessments and report back to the board at the next meeting.
Yeah, because I think we're getting profiled on the road. I think we need to make a decision, because we're going to be some buildup, we're going to have shit, like we were a few years ago. It's going to be unbelievable. If those people in those houses, maybe they don't have no kids, don't they?
Maybe. Is that okay, that motion to request Dr. Cash?
That's what the board, yeah.
To work with the architect and other staff and gather information and cost assessments and report back to the board in September?
So we're not necessarily hiring them, because, uh, two years ago, didn't we contract them to do a, a growth study?
Which
Based on that growth study, yes. It's just a conversation, I think, that Dr. Cash would need to have and report back to the board before, I guess, going to the commission for funding. Patty, could you read that motion? I can try it again, I think I said it differently, you want me to try it? Mr. Bryson, would you like to try it?
I definitely want Dr. Cash to be able to, to do something that we can use.
Okay, a motion to request Dr. Cash to work with the architect and other involved staff to gather information and cost assessments and report back to the board in September. Do I have a, a second for Mr. Bryson's motion?
I'll second his motion.
Okay, have a motion and a second, any questions or comments? Patty, would you call the roll?
Ms. Goins?
Yes.
Ms. Baydy?
Yes.
Ms. Lee?
Yes.
Ms. Bryson?
Yes.
Ms. Smith?
Yes.
Ms. Cashin?
Yes.
Ms. Taylor?
Yes.
Seven yes, zero no, motion passed.
Thank you. Now, I think that we have taken care of the items that we put at the end, is that correct, Patty? Okay, announcements, September the first, schools will be closed for Labor Day. September the ninth will be our next regular school board meeting at five o'clock. And just information, pardon me? September the ninth, is that correct, Patty?
You, you have, I, that's, that's what I'm saying, that September date, Mr. Lemon, is pretty early, it's September ninth, I, I
Eleven is what I've got.
Okay.
Eleven is the seventh Thursday.
Is it the eleventh instead of the ninth, I'm glad you caught that, Mr. Lemon.
The eleventh is Thursday, the ninth is Tuesday.
But you have, um, you have, um, TSBA in there somewhere.
Oh, the district meeting.
Oh, the district meeting.
No, it's not there. The tip that we have, the local, that fall meeting.
Yeah, your, your TSBA, um, fall district meeting is on the left, therefore your meeting was moved to the, uh, to, to the ninth.
Where's that meeting at?
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah. It was at the last board meeting?
It was passed at the last board meeting.
May I amend that to respectfully ask for October instead of September, since we're coming up on the ninth and it's, that's
Are we going back to that motion?
Yes.
Yes, I'm so sorry.
Okay.
Just a month later.
Did they pass the motion?
Yes.
Okay.
I don't, I don't have a problem.
I would need another, I would need another motion.
Could the motion just be that Mr. Bryson amends it?
I amend it to the changes to that date that you need to have.
October, then.
October, okay. Which means you have to have another vote, you have to have, you got a motion, you need a second? Okay, we have a motion to amend to the October meeting instead of the September meeting. Do I have a second?
Second.
Have a second? Any questions? Patty, would you call the roll?
Yes.
Yes.
Ms. Baydy?
Yes.
Ms. Taylor?
Yes.
I changed it.
That was
Yes.
Ms. Bryson?
Yes.
Seven yes, zero no.
Okay, now back to the announcements. I would just like to briefly go over, all our board meetings are listed on the Bradley County Schools website under upcoming meetings. They are published five days prior to a meeting under the meetings and agenda link. And notification is available on the Bradley County Schools Facebook page under details. Additionally, the next board meeting is announced at the end of each monthly meeting as well as sending announcements to local news outlets. In the event that there is a special called meeting, a forty-eight hour notice is required. All meetings are available online and live on the Bradley County Schools website, the Bradley County Schools Facebook page and on Mix one oh four point one's Facebook page. We welcome anyone and everyone to attend or view our meetings. Any announcements from board members, Ms. Cashin?
I have a couple. These breakfast, Saturday morning breakfast that you all have as fundraisers, several of us love to go to those. In fact, we were there Saturday for Walker Valley softball at Aubrey's. I know that there's one on the twenty-third, Aubrey's for Bradley, tennis and golf, and then there is one, um,
Is it the twenty-third or this one?
This month, yeah, twenty-third of this month. And then there is one, um, September thirteenth, Bradley volleyball at the Tom's. We would love to come, and, and if you don't want us there, that's fine, don't tell us about it. But if you'd like to have us there, let us know about these things. And, and some of our arts grants are starting. Annie Junior Prospect will have their play on September twentieth and twenty-first at Lake Forest and then on the twenty-seventh and the twenty-eighth at Lake Forest. And hopefully I'll have more to tell you about on the arts grants, if they're doing Annie Junior. So, and, and don't expect us to look at Facebook to find out that you're having a breakfast.
Okay, thank you. All right, now we're going to agenda items for the next board meeting. I do have an item that I would like to add, Ms. Cashin, an update on legislative issues pertaining to public education. Could you give us a brief report on, at the next meeting?
Yes, ma'am, I'd be glad to.
Okay, thank you. Any other items or agenda items to add to the next meeting?
Is this September?
September, you have your elections in that, in that month. Okay, we do have elections for officers, chairman, vice chair, T L N representative in September, anything else? And that will be at the very beginning of the meeting. Okay, hearing nothing else, this meeting's adjourned.
What is TSBA?
Well, it takes a man to twenty minutes to get, I don't know, since we don't have
Did we determine October ninth, fourth?